I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today's November 1st, 2022, 9:30 a.m. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the record show, that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Stone. And we have nothing from the assessor's office to review of the bills.
Will I move that we've had those bills properly checked first?
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills. They have been presented and approved. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. 9:31 appointment. We have Joe McGrew, our facilities manager, who has been extremely busy this morning with a variety of issues with an update.
Good morning, commissioners and good morning, everybody. Commissioner Stone is right. There's no dog moments around here, and that's the way we like it. So just really quickly, to go over some of the things that we are doing at some of the buildings at the courthouse, on the outside four plates were still changing the plexiglass side glass to make it look nicer. Looks like it's been a while since they changed it. Mark had scraps. He's been making them. We've been putting them in over three days. Of course, as you all saw, many leaves. We're taking care of the leaves as they come down. We're making everything look nice. And at the courthouse, we will change Ms. Lisa's. It's on the near future project list, Ms. Lisa's office. She had the copier room over away from the clerk's office, and the copier needs to be in there with all the girls. So she's going to move it over with the girls, and she's going to move over to the copier room. It's very minimal cost on the situation. It's all in-house. We're going to run some cat five lines either on the evening or on the weekend or on one of the holidays. And we will get that straightened up. I think her pride, I think she wanted to move in by Thanksgiving, and we'll have our part done, and we'll get with IT. He might share, and they'll do their part after we pull the cat five bars. So that's just a few of the things going on at the courthouse. The annex building, we had a situation where a nice lady had ran into the dumpster, and the trash guys did not get the dumpster in its spot. And to be fair, I have noticed after that situation, I make sure every time they come, I push it back with the truck that has the big bumper on it. But to be fair, I noticed that the trash truck with the bents at all can't get in because of the limbs, and we will very quickly trim those limbs so they can get it back where it goes. It does take up a spot if they don't get it back where it goes. So as we all know, we need every spot here at the annex. So we'll get that straightened out very quickly. At the sheriff's office with the new roof, we had a great meeting with Steve Spiker. He will be the product check manager for Veritas. We all know him. He's a local Brewston-Hazelton type of guy. And we met with him. We met with the job foreman. We went over staging and parking and getting the materials in. I think we're going to be bringing the materials this week and the equipment to get up there. I think we're moving away, moving along nicely with the roof of the sheriff's office. Now, this morning, they had a AC situation. Believe it or not, it does get very hot in there. And we're quickly, I think, I got the call as it come through the door. I think I was over there trying to get it straightened out. It was a username password near Mark can't spell. So I think we got that all straightened up, and I think the ladies will be happy again. At the McGrew House, great news. The second furnace is on, so the furnaces will be wrapped up. They have, I have got with the ladies. They have set where they want the outside AC condensers. On the pre-days, we'll continue to finish that job this winter as the weather permits. And as we all know, it's not very important to have AC. We're very happy that we have heat now and nothing will happen to the house. And they had their pie pick up, and our furnace worked fine. They were very happy that the first furnace was on and ready, and we turned it right up. It was nice and warm. So we're very happy about that. At the extension service, I had mentioned it to the commissioner very briefly. We realize it's an old building, but we realize they still utilize that building, and it did not have a wheelchair ramp. So if commissioners don't object, we will move forward in-house, building the ramp to the kitchen door, basically from the street or parking lot to the kitchen door. And we'll do it in-house. It should be less than $3,000. I know we all want a future place for the extension service. I know we're all working towards that in the future. But in the meantime, it'll be a little while. I think that is, we should go ahead and build a wheelchair ramp. That ramp will be solid out in the future. If that building would happen to be used for storage, it will be very much easier to get big, large objects in so it will have a usefulness beyond the extension service. If that building is back, you'll decide to use it for storage in the future. So the animal shelter, as I mentioned last week, Mark was able to fix the big plastic tub to try to save the shelter the money of replacing it. It looks as though I haven't heard no bad reports. It's still good shape. So that is just about it. And I thank you all so very much. There's many other situations going on, and we will get them straightened out as quickly and fast as possible. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Nick Sartin. I called the clerk about the election center.
Your update, yeah. I see.
Thank you. Just let her know.
Cool.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Kim Riley with West Virginia Caring. She has a proclamation, National Hospice Month.
Good morning, commissioners and guests. I thank you for being able to present to you. West Virginia Caring is a nonprofit hospice that provides services for Preston County and 11 other counties. It was formed out of necessity over 40 years, around 40 years ago by a group of individuals, including Dr. D.R. Davis, Dr. John Trenton, and more to take care of end-of-life care patients and families. Today, almost 40 years later, we are the only nonprofit hospice program here in Preston County and still providing care to patients and families, plus 11 other counties. I am here to ask if you would declare November National Hospice Month in honor and memory of those patients, families, employees, volunteers that continue to serve our mission of providing excellent care. Thank you.
I have a move that we declare November as the National Hospice and
Palate of Care.
Palate of Care Month.
I all mean second. Appreciate what you guys do.
Thanks.
It's been properly moved and seconded to declare November as National Hospice and Palate of Care Month by the Preston County Commission? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. We do have a proclamation that I can read, or unless you would like to read it. Would you like to read it? It's just one page. There's two copies.
Okay, yes, I'll look like a book.
It's not a book.
If that's what you would like, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Whereas hospice and palliative care are holistic, patient and family-centered, provided by a team approach to treat the body, the mind, the spirit. At the heart of all this is meeting patients and families where they are living with serious life-limiting illnesses. Whereas for more than 40 years, hospice and community-based palliative care providers have helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people. Whereas hospice and palliative care empower people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite the life-limiting illness. Whereas the interdisciplinary team model at the core of the hospice and palliative care provision involves a holistic approach to treatment, including expert medical care, symptom control, as well as attending to the patient's emotional, spiritual, psychosocial needs, and provides a family service like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas over 1.5 million Medicare beneficiaries living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs through the Medicare hospice benefit every year here in the country. Whereas each year, 50% as opposed to the current 50% of deceased Medicare beneficiaries use hospice for 24 months, nearly $2 billion could be saved by the Medicare program annually. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. So whereas West Virginia Caring, formerly known as Hospice Care Corporation, has faithfully served West Virginia for nearly 40 years in Barbara Braxton, Calhoun, Gilmer, Marion Monongalia, Oklahoma's Preston, Randolph, Taylor, Tucker, and Wexel Counties. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Samantha Stone, along with the Preston County Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in her, in here, I proclaim November 2022 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss the end-of-life wishes with the families, and observe this month appropriate activities and education.
So probably claim. Very good. If I'd have read to the end, I guess I would have just read it.
Yeah.
I should have stopped there.
You should have stopped. That's all right.
It wouldn't have.
We can, we can get you a wig. Go Walmart, have them discount it. So that'll be different. All right. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you for the, the.
Can I ask before I leave if we have any veterans in the room?
Yes.
Thank you for your service. I do a program of hospice called We Are Veterans. And so one of the things that we do is we pin veterans at the end of their life. And so we also go around and recognize other veterans. So.
Thank you.
Who else?
George right here.
Of course, George.
George. No, at least two.
Thank you, George. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Dave Price, congratulations on your retirement.
Oh, thank you.
I'll be joining you.
Yeah, that's right.
December 30th.
You know what? You told me that last.
No, 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 this is true. They're trying to talk me into staying. I just can't.
You told me that last.
Family, family, pocket first.
How do you want it? You doing okay?
Put the retirees together.
Pretty sure we get you.
Yeah.
You wouldn't look as pretty as if the.
We know that. Thanks for supporting us.
Well, before Ms. Kim, please, I would like to, you know, reiterate the whole county's thanks for the amazing organization. I'm sure many of you, the whole organization, West Virginia Caring, has helped all of my family members, my uncles, my dads, my brothers, everybody. They have done an amazing job. Ms. Kim and Maylene and the whole of our staff, they have did an absolutely outstanding job from people of Preston County.
They really did.
Yeah, sadly, but.
Yeah. I understand that.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Take care, Kim.
Thank you.
See you.
All right. Next up, we have Stacy Greaser of Blueprint, Blueprint Community regarding the Christmas parade.
Yeah, so a whiter note.
A whiter note. Is that what she said? Oh, don't say that.
Whiter.
Whiter.
I thought white, white.
Christmas, so.
I would like. No, no. So it's a little. So anyhow, I'm part of the Blueprint Community's Kingwood group, and we've been working on the Christmas parade this year. And we're working closely with the city of Kingwood, and they're actually planning something new this year. The city's actually going to be doing a Christmas party from 2:00 to 5:00 at the civic center. We're going to have games and things for the kids. December 17th. So then the parade will follow immediately at 5:30, and we'll be coming up through town. And we'll end here at the McGrew House. We'll pass it. Mr. or Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will also be a part of the parade and setting up down at the McGrew House to hand out something special for the kids. So I'm coming to you all to ask for permission, and I believe they've done this in the past, to be able to use the electricity from the little building down there for the tree lighting that we will be doing following the Christmas parade. And then that would remain lit throughout the holiday season. So I asked the commissioner for their permission to be able to use the electricity from the little building down there for the tree lighting that the mayor of Kingwood is actually going to be doing the tree lighting as well. So we're all trying to work together and, you know, organize this. And hopefully, the weather will be great. What we can turn out and things will go smoothly. So also, if you all know anyone that wants to participate in the Christmas parade, I'll leave some participational release forms here over here on the desk. So feel free to give those to anybody you know.
Okay. I have one you need.
Well, I think Kathy already gets one of those.
I've got a couple groups, I believe, that are interested in just paying. So I'll be getting this. What's the number to turn this in?
Uh, I believe we have the end of the month. Yeah, they have a party.
December 16th.
Yeah. So I'll leave some of these. And like I said, feel free to hand those out to anyone.
Dave, dressing up for the parade.
Are you dressing up?
Yes, that's me.
That's me. Hey, you all can be a part of the parade.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, you all can ride in the parade.
Well, that, that, okay, before we get too far off track here, I make a motion we allow them to use the electricity on the tree and use it throughout the holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Second, and we'll have you check with the other Joe. Make sure it's functioning, powers off. Yes, it's an outside perspective.
Yeah.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the Blueprint Community to utilize the electricity at our building down there, the drive-through or annex, additional annex per month for the month of December through the holiday season. So like the Christmas tree. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, we have Hunter Mullins. And I, you don't look like Hunter.
No.
You are.
Yeah.
We are meeting in an executive session with Mullins and Mullins regarding the opioid settlement and ongoing litigation update. So at this time, we need to go into executive session. Can I get a motion?
Uh, so move. Now, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to go into an executive session regarding the opioid settlement and update.
And what is your name? Matthew Urban. Matthew Urban.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
You're going to love our.
Our chambers.
Our chambers.
It works. We just have to get chairs.
We have chairs.
I read about it yesterday. Well, they tried to make it look bad, and he actually did it seven ways. For a time, and it's a shame.
Are we catching?
I'm here.
I love your show.
Thank you. Thank you. I would get all that stuff. I'm afraid people are going to be getting gone.
So was I.
Tyler, they run you around.
Well, there's three of them that came to spend the night, and they wait from 5:00 to 10:00. So they never quit.
Yeah, yeah.
Or eating.
Or fighting.
Fighting, yes. Fighting, yes. They're going to have to fight more than.
Everything wrong for this.
The two girls, I could see the shoes on.
And then this morning, they rocked everybody's out. We had a wreck.
They're pretty good, so we're good.
A lot of them. First responders and.
Did you sound like always?
That lady that we went to, man, she splintered that thing with a Volkswagen doll. I mean, it came inside of her car that the pole was like, there's like a stick of dynamite in the middle of it. Just blew it up. It's.
I wouldn't think a dog would be breaking up the roof.
I would either. She had to let it skate. But actually, what Volkswagen's are some of the, out of all the wrecks that we do on, that's why my son's driving one. Because our jaws a lot, and we even cut the frames on them. The way they're molded, maybe they're, they're tough.
That one's good.
But yeah, she.
I've, I've had one as a rental. I've never had one.
Yeah. Like, I got my son a little one, and I had a bar.
My brother has a Volkswagen.
My brother has a.
Diesel wagon. It's a diesel.
Yeah.
It's actually Volkswagen diesel wagon.
My brother's Volkswagen is a diesel. My stepdad's Volkswagen is a diesel.
Just because they're diesel. It wasn't a diesel.
Well, I had, I had a Golf as a gas engine, four-cylinder gas engine Golf as a rental. And I drove it, walked it, drove like 1,000 miles. I was getting 40, averaging like 42, if you go.
Well, what if diesel? What if diesel, you know? What if it got like 40 or something with the diesel?
Yeah. Like I said, they're tough Volkswagen cars. They don't have pretty good.
It tricked her pretty last night.
I have executive sessions, and they'll be open.
You probably have. Two Saturdays ago. I had, I counted about 600 of them against our tree. And I know they're, they were from all.
Important stuff, Ms. Kathy.
Yeah.
Do people like to treat anymore?
I don't know. A lot of people in these are first planning well. We're going to be going back to the fire department next year.
Edgar said at the council meeting that the Rotary decided that ahead.
Well, I know why the Rotary decided that hasn't is because we're, we're, we can't leave our projectors and our egos at the store and act like we're enough. So we don't have to have the Rotary to do it at the fire department. They just sponsored it, so we're just going to.
Well, Edgar said that the council would like to do door-to-door next year.
Yeah. Yeah, no. Well, a lot of.
Although, did it rain real hard when it was time to go out? Because I didn't go out last night with them.
No, no, it wasn't raining yesterday.
I know the business trick-or-treat we did here in town, we had about 700 kids. But we ran out of candy, and Joe went and bought his four, because he stood over there. I mean, it was great. It was kids from every place. It was good for the businesses because they had McDonald's and packed. They had this pack. I asked John, and he said a lot of these children's meals. And I knew exactly what they were doing, just when I would have been you're not getting that candy till you eat some.
But yeah, they were definitely going to go back to the thing down.
Then a couple, yeah, a couple of our churches do.
We don't have to have the right to sponsor it. We can put it on instead.
Pred Sorina.
Well, we keep running, we run that schedule every week.
We've done that for so long. We've done that since I was a kid. I mean, granted, it used to be all the gymnasiums.
When my kids were little, they were up there and did it. It was fun.
Yeah. And it's not like, oh, and then angels like, oh, you're either way. You know, we go to the kids in town, but it brings them to it because people from other places.
But you know what I'd do?
I'd have to store it hopping and.
Well, it's like us. We live way out in the country. There are no houses.
I like the chocolate, but I don't like anything fruity.
That's where you can.
We had no neighbors.
Yeah, but that's, we get, I mean, we always have a clue.
That would be. They used to give, was it New Birth that gave hot cider and gingerbread? Or was one town for years, neighbors tear off and family, their party gave gingerbread and hot cider.
They done the tickets when we done the costume contest on the crowds.
I remember the costume price because you had all the way up to adults.
Yeah. And then the, with the tickets, the kids get.
That's fun for them.
Yeah. I hate it. I want to go to the town meetings there, but they're always on the same night. Our card is our meeting.
We, we try to cover as many meetings as we can, but there's only me and you. There's all meetings, a lot of meetings on the same night.
Yeah. Yes, there are, well.
Don made the motion to come out of executive session. Commissioner Price seconded that motion. All three were in favor.
And this time, I would like to make a motion that we agree to use six of the agreements settlements and authorize the president to sign each, each one of them. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to enter into the agreeing, agreements concerning the opioid settlement, settlements, and authorize the president to sign those documents. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Matthew. You got to get some world's today, too?
Ah, leader in the day in political.
Ah, okay. Hunter is in. Okay.
One appears.
The Biden bumper.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to let everybody know, on these settlements, as he wrote us, each one of these is set up differently. So when we get money from each of these six, it just varies. So it isn't like everything comes at once from all six of them or whatever. It's, it's staggered out, so.
Three of them are pharmaceutical producers, right? And three are pharmacies.
Pharmacies.
Walmart.
Walmart, Ried, and CVS. And the three producers are Teva, Allergan, and Janssen.
It's most updating things up to, we're going to make sure.
We're moving all on the board, so we can take those.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is that something that?
No, no, I'm glad that we have higher chance of that. Church.
Can I get a copy of that as well? Or just you have all of that?
I know. So yeah, we don't have my clerk. But we're good.
Okay. And I think he has more char.
Yes.
She said Chinese.
I'm glad I'm having kids. He's cute. How glad I don't have any kids. He's cute.
When you come back, you can tell Hunter that, that we, uh, you know, had refreshments. It was just a good time, saved by all.
I know there was several here. I need to sign both copies?
Yes. Yeah, the ones for you all.
Okay.
One for the director.
Yeah, as long as he gets the one signed.
I just.
You're completely.
Need, yes.
The copy that is for me is the one with the additional literature on the back, right? Because this has, I believe, an unlimited.
It was one that was kind of by itself.
Oh, here in the back. This, I didn't see that on there.
I think it's very. There's some.
Yeah, I feel right.
Okay, we'll pull your thing. Just wanna make sure you got it.
Everything.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a different setup. Okay, there's five, that's. Yes.
All right.
All right, thanks for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
You too. Safe travel. Thanks.
All right. Go ahead and approve the minutes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October fourth and October eleventh. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have time to do the estate settlements. We have four estate settlements from the clerk for Jimmy Brown, our Donald Cousins, Charlie McMillan, and Charles Pace. If we approve those. I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list for October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two through October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two for Brown, Cousins, McMillan, and Pace. Commissioner, uh, Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
This time I'd like to dispense with the reading of the proceedings and vacation for October twentieth, February twenty-sixth and accept them into the record. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the PIBs and enter them into record for October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two through October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. All right, brings us to our ten o'clock appointment with Robin Schooly of West Van Gogh Bank with a Ryan Fund update.
I can sum it as one word. The market sucked.
Do you want me to be formal or?
Sure.
It's easier for everybody to see and hear you.
Okay. Okay, so this is an update of the Ryan Fund account. And, um, if you bypass the first title page, um, this is kind of a summary. So the actual donation was done on March twelfth, two thousand nineteen of two ninety-four, two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars. And it was finally fully invested in twenty twenty. Uh, you, uh, the return for twenty twenty was twelve point two, even with the withdrawal of the fifty-one, one forty. I believe that was the start of the wealth. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the return was seven point eight, even with the even larger withdrawal of a hundred and forty-three, four twenty-five. Um, again, I believe that was for continuing the roof repairs. Um, and, and everyone knows the market conditions in twenty twenty-two have not been great. So the next page just kind of, um, shows where we're current, currently allocated as far as the fund. So we have very little in cash, um, even though the money markets are paying about two point six percent. We have about sixty-one, a little over sixty-one percent allocated to equities and thirty-seven point nine percent allocated to fixed income. So, um, the final page shows what your investment policy states. And, um, we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, stocks and bonds have now declined in each of the first three quarters of the year. It's rare, um, that that has happened. However, markets in an election year are very volatile. This is a mid-election year with a first-term president, so that makes it even more volatile. Um, since nineteen forty-six, nearly seventy-three percent of the time, the S and P index finishes the calendar year with a positive price return. So that's good looking forward. And, um, the fixed income returns have a shorter history, but highlights the recent historic performance. Since nineteen seventy-seven, there have been four periods of negative total returns for bonds. The, the largest decline has been registered in nineteen ninety-four with the Bloomberg U.S. aggregate down two point nine percent. Currently, the index is down nearly fifteen percent on a year-to-date basis. So nothing is looking good. Usually you have an inverse relationship with stocks going up, bonds going down, but now everything is just going down. Um, so basically, um, after a sixteen percent decline since the August highs and given a very oversold markets and the depressed positioning, we don't view this as a time of negativity. So especially in the short term. So we're looking forward to the final quarter of the year and things turning around. Um, the U.S. economy, the dollar's strong and, um, corporate America is strong. So we're looking at our U.S. equities as a little bit of an overweight to kind of help solve our positioning issues. So that is it without me boring you on the economy. I got to hear a.
You can't bore me.
I got to hear a very renowned economist last week, um, from Federated and of course, our team, um, deals with, uh, different economists on a daily basis. And those are the minimal highlights. So, but I do want to say that your account, if it hadn't been invested today, um, or yesterday, the value was a hundred and twelve, two hundred and fourteen thousand. If it hadn't been invested with the withdrawals you've taken out, you would only have seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. So we have to look at a positive note.
Yep.
That this fund has been supporting the withdrawals a little bit and, um, just going forward. And I'm not sure what other roof repairs or other anticipating withdrawals.
I, I don't think anything. That was the big thing. And, and the good thing, like you said, on the front end, we, with the investments, we pulled that money out. Not that we were trying to time the market by any means. There's no way to do that. It came to our advantage by having invested because it was up higher. Uh, the fact that, like you said, this is a very unusual year and the fact that bonds and stocks are both down. Normally, like you said, one goes down, the other goes up.
Right.
Now, the Fed's got things so jacked up right now that everything's going down. That's just my sentiment, but it's not just mine. It's other people I've talked to, including my financial advisor.
And, um, I can say that, um, the economists last week said that interest rates are gonna continue to go up until they, um, are higher than the inflation rate.
Correct.
So I believe the Fed's gonna probably go up another three quarters percent this week.
Yeah, they're gonna up seventy-five basis points. At least.
I looked for the three quarters this week, but, um, not anymore.
That was, yeah, the typical, most of the reports I heard that they said they didn't want to go a full point right before the election.
Oh, no, they weren't.
Because that just does not have good eye value.
No. Um, so hopefully next quarter and, um, in the next year, things will look better.
Yeah, like in length, you said, if, if, if you look at the markets over a five-year, ten-year period of time, this is a very eight-year. Things just really. Well, I'll tell you what. I'm not saying we're in this public domain.
Well, I can tell you that since nineteen forty-five, there have been twelve fair markets.
Yeah.
And one of them was very short-lived, which was one month when the COVID shutdown started.
Yeah, exactly.
So the longest one was in nineteen forty-five, which lasted like thirty-six months. That was.
Yeah, typically the market goes up about eight percent on average since like nineteen twenty-something.
So we're looking for, um, when the market drops like this, some good things going forward.
Yeah, almost only one way to go. Don't say that.
Please.
Don't say that.
Please. Any questions?
No, ma'am. I think we're probably gonna leave stuff alone for a while. There's no reason to sell into a loss. You do that when you're trying to.
Right now, it's just on paper.
I know that, I know that, but if you do that when you're trying to, uh, the only reason you would do that right now is if you were trying to convert your IRA to a Roth IRA to save something because you can take the loss and then get that tax break in the long run, that would be the only reason. Because I've heard that, I've read that in Forbes and a couple of other things that said that's the only reason you would sell into a loss, to convert our IRAs to Roths, so you don't have to pay that tax as much tax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's continue on for a few minutes early for our next appointment. We have a discussion today for care Sunday.
Lovely.
Arco Sunday.
Listening.
All right, we have a little bit of time here. We could go ahead and start with some EMS discussion.
Well, I, I took it by myself. What I did, um, I mean, you should copy this. Um, the two, yeah, yeah, this is just, and the re, and, and, and it's, 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 um.
I've noticed it mimics.
And it mimics two of the ordinances that we received, well, Hampshire and Morgan. They're very similar, a lot of the same, um, and even some parts of Jefferson, and just a couple of sections of Jeffersons because, um, I know Commissioner Price was, um, concerned about the homestead exemption, so that, that, I pulled that out of, uh, I think Jeffersons and wherever it was at. But most of the way this is laid out, it, and even like I said, I didn't take very little definition. I just did something, you can see those dot, dot, dots where I kind of stopped on stuff. Because, you know, we know where it's going and we just have to get to agree on it. This, you know, the sections that they have incorporated that I have on this, you know, are very similar. Some, there's no reason to even change, like section twelve where it says amendment. Um, that, that's the same every once. It, it's, it's according to the, or, you know, it's according to the code. It has to be said that way, and that's just the way it is. The other thing is, like I said, it's mirrors Hampshire and Morgan. They have slight differences. They have their definitions, which I think is very important to define what your, you know, what is available structure, what isn't. What, everything is accounted for. What's inhabitable, what's non-inhabitable, and such and so forth. The, the late, the rates and the late charges, that's something we have to make the determination. Um, most of them have either set it up as a fiscal, the fiscal year beginning, the, the fee starting on July first and ending on July thirtieth, because that's our fiscal year. And the fee has to be payable by September first, you know, and after that, there's, uh, late charges. I didn't include that in here. I kind of ended there.
I think they were with half the fee by, by September first and half of it by March.
Right, and that's what, yeah, it, it, it has that several days, but I just kind of, if you look at that section three, I just kind of, I didn't take all that out.
Yeah.
Uh, that's something that, and the reason I didn't take that out is because I didn't know what, each one of them had a different amount of, for the late fees. Okay, some of them were like.
Interest.
Ten, for ten dollars because it was based on what they are charging, okay? Because each one of them were charged at a different amount. So ten dollars may be this or that, but you know, in, 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 in our situation, we may say, okay, it's five percent or ten percent or whatever. Um, of the, of the fee as opposed to a set amount, you know, that's, it's ten dollars or twenty dollars or whatever it was, depending on what your structure, you know, what, what it was and how late it was. Um, and also that section included how you collect it too, you know, for, uh, how you go collecting it and that sort of thing, who's to mail it out and everything, but on that note also, if you look in. There's, um. Oh, well, I was kind of, where did I put it? Which one? Well, that six percent that we had talked about retaining at the county commissioner level, oh, there it is. I misstake the word, but I said, section seven, the very last sentence, I did this type of section. It said, sure, is to retain, uh, six percent of the energy. One of them had a five, a six point five percent, but yeah, Morgan, yeah, thank you. And, uh, but I thought six percent is probably the better, nicer, rounder number. I mean, nothing mattered. But we have to look at that because that's gonna, that's gonna take care of those costs for mailing out the fee, the statement to people and also accounting for it for the sheriff's office and, and paying someone at least part-time. I don't know that it'd be a full-time job, but at least it'd be a part-time job to get that stuff mailed out and then make sure it's being collected in and count for it so that it's then transferred to, you know, into the, the ambulance fund so that it's taken account for. Like I said, if you look in section four, that's where I put that thing in there about homestead exemption, that, the, the B, I didn't go all the way through there for, because there's other examples of modification or exemptions depending on what it is, because one of them, like, the very first one is obviously determined to be uninhabitable according to definitions of order. It's uninhabitable, you can't really well put a fee on it because no one's living there, so there's different things of that sort, so. But this is very, like I said, I, after looking at all the different ordinances, Hampshire, Morgan are very similar. Their rate structure is different. Thank you, Judge, for this. This is, breaks it down, little summary on the fee structure. But their fee structure is a lot different because they have seasonal, one of them takes into account seasonal homes, one doesn't. Um, that already has stuff on businesses. I don't know if we want to go there on businesses because of how you make that determination, because it's like a hundred and twenty dollars, already's got a hundred and twenty dollars for less than ten employees. Well, if I'm a business owner and it's gonna cost me an extra hundred bucks to hire somebody, I might not hire them today, you know? Depending on what my business is. Or in case, you know, so it just, it just depends.
I think it's a little complicated to do that.
It, it is, but Hampshire, I visited Hampshire when, when I visited Hampshire County and spoke with them about their ordinance.
They just didn't do business.
They didn't.
They didn't.
I think that they wish that they had.
Oh, yeah, I.
It was either them or Morgan. One of the two said they wished it had this. But I don't see.
Morgan has businesses, uh.
Yeah.
I mean.
No, it doesn't.
Hampshire.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. Oh, and Morgan has the business structure, I think, according to this. I thought that, yeah, but maybe they don't.
I've been in many businesses. I mean, I can't, I, a, a lot, but I believe that.
I think you need to get clear business. I, I was going to agree, but what I'm saying is.
I've been in multiple that I've seen instances where they've had to call for.
Yes, and, but I'm saying is I don't think there's a, a reason to have it tiered depending on the size. That gets too complicated. Okay, how many employees you got? Oh, I've got nine hundred and ninety-nine. Okay, you paid seventy-five hundred dollars. Well, I've got ten thousand, and I've got a thousand now. Well, now you pay ten thousand dollars. Well, for any given day, what is that gonna be? You know what I mean? If I, if I'm a bit, I can get around this because if it's at July first, I lay everybody else on July, I lay everybody in my business off June thirtieth, and I got one employee me. And on July second, I hire back everybody back. Now I've got a hundred employees.
That's the same thing to do with the, uh, packs on inventory.
I know that. My, my point is.
Call it to Ohio before July first and then bring it back.
My point is, it makes more sense to just have it be a set amount.
Yeah, I think so. And maybe the same as the others.
Because I can get around it one way or another.
I don't, I don't think, you know, I think that you could just make every fee the same pretty much, except for maybe the, the.
We will continue this discussion shortly. It's time for our ten fifteen appointment. We'll come back to that, so good discussion though. All right, next we have the town of, uh, Brewston Mills with a request for Arco funding. Good morning.
Good morning. So we have some handouts for you guys. We can have some pictures.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking. I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, I think, yeah, this is similar.
So, good morning. My name is Tamara Wilson. I am the town reporter for the town of Brewston Mills. And we have a bridge. Um, you'll see some pictures there on the pages in the handout that I gave you. Um, it's pretty much a safety issue. And, um, we're trying to see if we could get some Arco funding from you all. This bridge is on the Mill Street Bridge, so if you're familiar with Brewston when you come in, the, you cross the bridge in the bridge and you take that first right, that's Mill Street. Um, we need to repair and upgrade it, and we're asking for thirty thousand from the county commission. It's used by the ambulance, the fire department. There's a daycare at the end of that street, visitors to the dam, fishermen. Um, and then once the Haynes Market opens up, we're expecting the traffic to increase there. And we'd like to get that taken care of if we could. Right now, it's a three-foot culvert. We're hoping to put in a five-foot culvert that would be forty feet long. And that should also help with some of the flooding along that area when we get high waters. Um, and you can see from some of the pictures here, um, how much it's crumbling. And then, um, it just had a basic design concept of what the bridge will look like and the culverts.
Pretty straightforward.
I'm sorry, what is it?
I said, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty simple.
Yeah.
Um, we explored some other things. We applied for the Kubota. We explored some other things, we applied for the Cambodia hometown proud brand and the 2022 AARP community challenge grant, we were not awarded any of those. We also have learned about the abandoned linelings economic revitalization grant program, but the application deadline for this year, it already expired, and the same for the federal bridge investment program. So, I work full-time and then I work for, somewhere else, and then I work part-time for the town. By the time issued, I'll probably realize the red tape that goes along with all that, so we're kind of in a bond, and we're hoping that the county commission can help us out.
Do, do you have an actual quote for the work?
It looks like right here.
Yes, we have three quotes.
Right, but you're, for the scope of it, if...
Yes, for, we received a bid for 24,927 dollars, and just to make sure that was realistic, we asked a couple of other people and we got together two bids.
Yeah, the ranges, yeah.
Okay, so, you have a project description, like they will do this, this, and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything happens part of the bid.
Yeah. You guys are very committed to 18,000 or your own funds, so this...
We have, yes.
I think it's a good project.
I agree. Something needs to be done. Do we, the question I asked, what else do we need from them, if we're going to award anything?
I think we would need to see those bids.
Okay.
There is an awesome open question, because anything that involves the water, we would want to know if we have the EP and all the associated waterways people.
We're working on permits, we had a core of engineers, we had a dam project that we're trying to do, and so they came last Monday, we had the core of engineer Sky and the engineering company that's doing the design plan for the dam, and when we were done with that meeting, we lost them over to the bridge.
Okay.
So we're looking at, we have a, they submitted the form on Friday for an W3 permit, because it's in the waterway. We've also talked to Clark Nicolaud, and he's our development coordinator, and he's talked with Timothy Keaton, who is the state theme person. So we have all those things in the works, but, you know, we need to get funding.
Well, we had to make certain that we can allocate ARCA funds because of the, being in the flood zone and things like that, so...
Yeah, I spoke with Clark about it, and he gave me the description, and he said, it's funny that they would, you know, that your project takes it up on a five-foot culvert, which is bigger than what's there, but they, you know, it's like, they have to approve that. Yeah, well, you know, it should, it should be simpler, but if it wasn't in Brewston.
That's what I understand, apparently that all, I've been the town reporter for about a year, apparently there were some issues.
You're learning that.
We're, we're moving forward, right?
Yes.
Check to rest.
But, but I do understand that because of the situation and the history, they, they look closer.
They're, yes, they're looking with the microscope.
That's not him, that's...
We have the three bids with us, do, can somebody make a copy?
We can, yes.
Do us to email to you.
We can make copies?
Over here, email.
Email.
Email's fine, let me give you a time off, that'd be fine, yeah. Let's save us.
All right.
They're all way on the status of the permitting.
If you will, we have your contact information?
Yes, with the blogger.
Perfect, all right.
And then where do I email, what's the best email address?
I'll get that.
Okay, perfect, all right. Do you need any other information from me? I don't think so.
I don't think so, this is pretty, you know, pretty straightforward, and, and we're positive about it, but they don't like for us to approve something that's not approved.
Right.
Written by somebody, yeah, special thing.
And they're telling us that we need an W3 permit, which is a non, or is a self-reporting permit, so hopefully that'll be, once we get past the 76 pages of instruction.
For messing with the water, right?
Yeah, once, once we get that filled out, we should be good to go.
Perfect. We'll go away feeling good about it.
All right, thank you very much.
Don't have to go away.
Actually, we do, I'll have to go back to other rooms.
Yeah, I see, probably got something you got to do. Thank you, Mr. ...
It's the life of small-town people, huh?
Yes, yes it is. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks to you all for coming.
Thank you.
We'll have a time that, that we get all this stuff put together, Joe here will, will be the interagency kind of guy, and, and then when that's done, then we can make a presentation of, of the thing, and it'd be nice if somebody came, if we could get all of it.
Okay, we'll be there.
Okay.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have anything else to discuss further for the EMS ordinance description today?
I leave that up to you, I discussed...
I appreciate what you did here, Dawn, I have marks all over mine.
That's fine, if, if you make marks on stuff and you want to make a note, please, give me that information, and then I can incorporate it into it. Like I said, I didn't type every little thing out, like, you know, uninhabitable, the definition, you know what I mean, I just didn't put that whole definition in there, it had something, I didn't want to waste time on little minutia things, I wanted to take, concentrate on the main and the parts, you know, so...
Okay, there is one thing that I, I just throw out to you guys that, that I did...
On this one?
Well, any of them, but Hampshire has more campers and camper lots and...
That was one thing I left out of there, because I wasn't sure how we wanted to do that, because that, that is one thing, they had, they had a section just for that, that was, you know, that, that was separate, Morgan didn't, they did.
And that's what I was...
And that was something to look at, but I didn't want to put it in there without, you know, discussing it, because I didn't want to make an assumption that we wanted to, you know, have camp, you know, camps or campers or whatever.
Well, I understand, we, we need to look at that as a big bear link context, and, and so, in particular, so...
Yeah, Hampshire has that seasonal mobile buildable structure, is what I, Morgan does opposed to that, the others don't either, that's the only one that had that, because, you know, I'm not familiar enough with Hampshire County to know, you know, they may have some big campgrounds here, I have no idea, I, I really don't have.
They do.
I drove through Hampshire County.
Well, they, they have, they have, down South Branch Valley does have...
And that's something we can, if that's something you want to incorporate into, that I haven't, I left it out because it is kind of very specific.
Well, I, I just wanted to call that out, so that we could be thinking about that between now and then, because that's a really important piece of, of the thing for us, maybe not for other counties.
Right, and like I said, they have that, they have a whole section here, and I just didn't put that in there.
Right, and it's, I don't know, it's still not exactly what we got to deal with.
Well, no, it's not, but it's something that needs to be taken into account.
Right, yeah.
And we may not even want to bill, you know, the fee will be different, sorry, they have a whole different, you know...
Yeah, and they do it differently, they have a different fee for that for us, so, what, we just need to come up with something that makes sense and is reasonable.
Or you don't think?
Okay.
And like, one of the things I know we'll probably have to put back in here, I didn't put it in there, is that definition for governmental structure, governmental unbuilding, you know, according to the regulations, according to the articles.
Government owned.
Yeah, government owned, and that may be a definition needs added in there for exemptions, because like I said, I didn't add all these different examples, I didn't know what, you know, what, under that section four, the fee exemptions and modifications, I didn't know what we wanted to do, I knew whether it was some, you know, one, obviously, was uninhabitable, you're not going to put a fee on an uninhabitable structure, nobody lives there, so...
Right.
But I know one thing we discussed was that homestead exemption, and one county does have it set up at least one of the...
Do all of the counties have the uninhabitable clause?
They almost, yeah, yeah, they do, it's part of their definitions or somewhere where within. That's the main thing, getting the definitions, some of them have more definitions than others, because like, you know, agriculture buildings, emergency, then if you go to, Morgans, they had a different setup of different, they, they went into more detail about different things, the legal user definition and this and that, and I don't know if that's necessary per se, you know, and they had the nearest certified medical facility, I don't know if that's a necessary definition for us, you know, because they're going to take them to the hospital, they got to take them to, you know, for his not concern.
There are cases where...
Well, crap, they may take them to Pittsburgh or Charleston, depending on what has happened, so there's no reason to say this and this and this, you know, and then, like, they had, and Jefferson counties has like square footage, a definition of square footage, well, why do you need that? You know, you know what square footage is. But they're basing it on the fact that their fee structure is based on square footage for how much you pay, so if the assessor office has your house as a 1,500 square foot house, you pay X, or if you have a 20, a 2,000 square foot house, you pay Y, you know, or X plus one, but whatever. But I think that's, that's because of the way their fee structure is set, I don't want to wee.
I don't really care for that at all.
I don't either. I don't think that's right, because it doesn't matter if you've got a great big house or a small house, it's based on, is somebody in there?
Yeah.
You know?
Or is it habitable for someone to be there?
Well, that, and that's the thing, that's why I think it's important to put that inhabit in, in uninhabitable definition in there, which is what I put in there, it basically says, which is not occupied by human beings, because it's either deteriorated, past repaired or condemned, I didn't put all that in there, condemned for safety reasons, strictly used for storage, non-human dwelling type activities, it's a barn, you know, per se, but, you know, I just didn't add that whole definition in there, but it's pretty much straightforward of what an inhabitable structure is, it means somebody's living there.
They're going to make sure we take care of agriculture.
Well, I know that, yeah.
And, and, and set that forth, because...
It's in there.
I, I, I understand that, but, but there are, it brought my attention when I said, if there's a farm and there is the family farmhouse, that's what gets the bill.
Correct, yeah.
However...
Correct.
Some mentioned that on the farm, they've divided it, and there are two or three families living on the family farm, and each one will...
Each one has an address.
Right.
Each one has to have an address.
Yeah. Well, they, they have addressed farms if they could, because if somebody gets hurt, then they can go back to that address, so it can't be the only thing that we go by. We just need to check the, and, and the assessor told me that probably to get an accurate count of the number of apartments, we're going to have to do that physically, go by.
Well, it doesn't, that doesn't surprise me.
And, so, we'll see what happens, because each, each one, the, the owner of the apartment building would provide the names and addresses of those people living there on 1st of July, and they're the people to get the bill.
Right.
So, otherwise, the owner of the building would get billed if they don't provide that. That makes sense.
With the turnover, though, and some of these apartment complexes and people moving, and how, how does that, how does that work? If they've only lived there a few months?
The way this works, and the way it works for the other counties, it's the owner who gets the bill.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the owner gets billed, gets a bill, it's a...
And then they collect it from there.
And then they collect it from the tenant, or they pay it, and they just pass it on to the tenant through rent.
That's probably...
And that's how they do it, that's how they pass their real estate taxes on to the tenant. Somebody says, oh, and somebody paid, one of the real estate taxes go up, I don't pay anything, I rent. Yeah, you do.
We still...
Yeah, you do, because that guy's got to get his money. So, I'm sorry.
All right.
If I may, I have one more thing.
Sure.
In that category. It was asked for us to get in touch with Matt Fryer concerning the development and the data, and he did get back to me recently, he says he'll be happy to assist as needed, and also that he has the previously approved quote for pre-implementation planning. But I just wanted to point out, it says, is the most important aspect of the fee is making sure that the ordinance references data points that can be easily derived from the available assessment data. I would hold Hampshire and Jefferson counties up as good examples, while Tucker would not be so much. Long explanation as to why, if, if we wanted, you will get it to us. And he gave other considerations, some of which had been discussed, but he considers these to be the key points. Homestead exemption, obviously. Flat fee per residence are based on square footage, we've heard that. How will businesses be assessed? Flat fee, square footage, number of employees, Arty does the number of employees, but says this requires real data collection.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
As you're asking them to self-report by July 1st how many they have, can you trump, you're just hoping...
If you're trusting them that they're reporting it correctly.
Setup of the collection of the fee, whether we do the tax office, county fee collector, setting up the annual schedule for when invoices are sent, when fees become delinquent, late fees and collections. And looking at collections, I think it was Hampshire that had a lot of extra material on the back, looking at, going through the process, and if we were looking at how many delinquencies there would be in a year, would we be flooding the courts with these collections when they got that far? Or do we go with the traditional collection agency setup? And how much does that come out of the 6% or so that we would pull back?
Were these, these were all Matt's thoughts?
Yes.
How about, what, 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 what is the next step with him as far as enlisting him, contracting with him to, to proceed to provide a lot of this information that we're struggling to get, and he has, and he can...
Well, he, he mentioned the previously approved quote, I need to get with Kathy and dig that out and see how much that is.
Yeah.
And we will get that information back to you, and then...
I, I think that that's, we, we have all read these things and understand the things that we don't like about some of them and the things we do like. It's my thinking that it's probably time to get the guy here and have a work session with him, so he can educate us and begin, you know, to talk to him about the contract. And that way, he, you know, he can tell us what we need to do next.
Right, and in the meantime, while we will get him up and running in that regard, he suggests that we get updates with 2022 numbers, since this is now based on last year, and by the time, and when the ordinance is adopted, we would have to go with 23 numbers.
Is that something he would do?
I believe that would be within his scope if we choose...
It was, the last, yeah, so I would say that that's, that's what we need to do, is find out what that next phase of his contract would be, and, and then next week, we can, you can talk to him and see if that's what we need to do if he comes, how's that?
Oh, I think you were talking about the actual, the Morgan counties is the one where it has, where it's collections, it's the one where it's like courts and all this, whereas, I like, kind of like Hampshire County better, because it's basis in, all the link of cash shall be spent for collection by either internal or external agencies, using all fees and costs that have been accumulated, so it doesn't say necessarily it has to go to court. It can be, you can hire an outside agency and they get a percentage of it, and you get your money back. Kind of like they were authorized in the sheriff's office to do, you know, what people are, property tax was delinquent, they were authorized to do that. You can use an outside agency, you know, you don't have to take it to court necessarily. That's Hampshire, which is more, more straightforward than, like you said, overwhelm, it's all sudden, you know, May 1st comes around, and all of a sudden you drop like all these three and four cases on top of them, you know, like, God knows how long it's going to take to go through that, or if you can hire an outside agency and they're going to get a percentage of the fee, at least you're getting something back, you know, because most of them do it by percentage if they're called correct.
Yeah, is everybody on board that you found out more about Matt's fees and maybe set up a...
Yeah, I think we have an aim for having him to come.
All right, I will get to him.
Yeah. Did you find that quote that he had previously done, so we have some idea of what, you know...
What's going to cause us to go to the next level?
Because I'd like to get it, you know, so it's, we have a good, a good baseline, so we know where we got to go with it.
This Matt that we're talking about, for anybody that's not familiar, he's done this work for other counties, so he's, he, he has a quick... So he's, he, he has a quick way of finding out from the information that's in the assessor's office and everything.
Yeah, he's.
What we have.
What's his company's name? I know he has.
G S.
G I S. G I S.
No, G S T.
Oh, G S T, I'm sorry. He uses G I S technology.
Right. So, and, and everybody else that's worked with him, please.
Yeah, and I like his insight when he was talking about Tucker County on that, you know, that I, I, I kind of see, looking at their stuff, I didn't, I wasn't partial to theirs too much because of the way they have it structured. Anyway.
Well, anyway, wait a second. I think we're, next week we'll do more.
Move along with our coordinator's report. Mr. Holder, we have several items that this is here for.
We do. First off is a calendar due, uh, since next Tuesday is our in-person election day. And it is a Tuesday, uh, we need to decide what to do concerning next week's meeting. Now, there we do Monday, Wednesday.
Normally we bump it to the following, so we would traditionally go to Wednesday. So.
Is there any pressing matters or?
Uh, there are none. This would essentially be pay the bills.
Okay. Any, any.
Something that comes up in time. We might not be doing so much scheduling and appointments.
Those make it nine thirty like.
Make a motion to have next week's meeting on the ninth.
At this time I move that we, uh, reschedule our weekly meeting to the ninth of November. Do you want to?
Same.
And properly moved and seconded to move our November eighth scheduled county commission meeting to November ninth, two thousand twenty-two at nine thirty in the county commission meeting room due to election day following on our regular scheduled meeting day. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
So we had in the next item, the Blue Star Memorial update. I had a conversation recently with Sarah Serena that was requested to find whether, uh, such a marker would be able to be inserted into the existing phase two design easily. Uh, she found that there are two probable spots for that. She is basically, um, for now, she's actually recommending that possibly we move it away from that site into a temporary location on the other side closer to the bell, uh, until there is permanent installation.
Okay.
Uh, she talked with the garden club and that setting, uh, does not deal with any concrete. Anything, it's just a ten-foot hole.
Okay.
For the post, it can be, you know, just slide it in and pull it back out.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is it going to be concreted in? It's going to be really.
Yeah, in, in phase two, it would be more permanently affixed, but for now it would just be harder to move it on possible. All right.
Thanks for that update. I have some additional things, I'm looking into that, so I would not like to take action, just to get on that.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of budget revisions here. First is getting the courthouse security grant into the system in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars into our state grants line. Um, that would be three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars for materials and supplies and sixteen thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars for the equipment. And that is divided because, uh, some of that money goes toward the DVR replacement.
Oh, yeah.
Surveillance system. So that makes one, this split is there. The rest is for the materials for, um, relocating the front entrance of family court and doing the interior work there. All of that is to be done with Joe and his group doing the in-house. Second revision is for VOGA. And they've done this because we kind of keep things moving for them for a couple of months until the grant comes through. So, um, we are taking three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars out of the contributions, match funds. It's normal, um, we are looking at twenty-five thousand seven thirty-seven in grant funding, eighteen thousand four hundred sixty-eight upstate grant funding, those are both increases. Then we set the salary. So increases the salary at forty thousand by nineteen, FIDA at three thousand one hundred thirty-one, retirement at three thousand six hundred eighty-three, and workers' comp at sixty-two dollars, as well as increases for travel at a hundred fifty and materials supplies at a hundred six. So I'd ask that the president be authorized to sign both of the budget revisions.
Is that all of the budget revisions?
That is all of them.
Okay.
At this time I mean that we approve these budget revisions and they have been presented to us. Sure.
And properly moved and seconded to approve the two budget revisions, um, for the courthouse security grant and also for VOGA. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
What happens with this VOGA thing is that the, the budget years for one agency doesn't match up with the budget year fiscal year for the commission. And so we have to kind of support the expenses, uh, salary until we get the state one. And so that's, seems to happen every year, which is okay if we're able to do that.
All right. And I have one other thing under miscellaneous correspondence and that is actually a, a very recent request to hire for community corrections. Uh, they would like to employ Diana Mullahan as an administrative assistant at community corrections, starting today, at a salary of thirty-one thousand dollars annually. And we have a community corrections representative, you know, thing to add on that.
I don't have any to add, they said that, um. She's sick.
Well, she's there today.
Oh, she?
Yeah, she was at the teller under the.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So she, she's there today.
Okay, I wasn't sure because the email that Eric got, it was kind of like.
So I, I basically dropped the ball on this and didn't get this hearing going. What I don't know could fill a book and I'm learning that as I go. Um, she is there, we did vote the community corrections board to hire her thirty-one thousand dollars annually. She accepted the job and she's there, uh, on the job today. So I'm asking that the county commissioner approve that and, um, whatever else needs to happen to bring her on board.
So I.
Sam Hess? Sam Hess?
I see Sam.
All right, um, we can move forward with the motion.
Sure. Okay, the motion would be to approve the hiring of Diana Mullahan as administrative assistant for the county community corrections program, beginning today, at a salary of thirty-one thousand dollars.
No, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the hire as submitted today by Sam Hess, who is the board president of the community corrections program. Uh, Diana Mullahan, uh, beginning today, effective November first, two thousand twenty-two, with a salary of thirty-one thousand annually. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. And, um, I think that's all that we need to do, um, just for future reference, make certain that, um, contact our office when you need to come and report the commission and all of those things are prepared and on our agenda as the actual appointments would be wonderful.
Okay, we'll do. I think, I mean, this is the place that we need to have a.
Update.
Update on what's going on, who's fired, who's hired, who quits, who's the new, you know? I think that we're the fiscal agent, you know that, so. When I talked to the folks in Charleston about it, they said, oh, you need to be really involved with community corrections to know what's going on. And I said, well, that's not the way it is right now. We haven't had anybody from community corrections here for months. So I would like to set up a date and, and it doesn't matter, whatever you guys can, can work through to be here and tell us what's been going on, the good, the bad, the, the dreams, the, the downsides and everything, if, if you would, so that we know what's going on because we're asked, we don't.
Would it be good, you meet weekly, right? Tuesdays? Would it be good just to do that like once a month at the?
Or a quarter, once a quarter even.
Yeah, well, at least if there's a question, but yeah, once a quarter is, is sufficient, but, yeah. To, to just do your best to try to keep with that. And if there's anything in between, then, you know, you can let it snow.
Okay.
My suggestion, Sam, take it or leave it, is the board has to meet quarterly. What you might want to do is just schedule the meeting with us right after that board meeting. That way you have any updates, you know, from the members and everything.
Keeps it quarterly, year to year.
Yeah, exactly. And then you can just track it that way. I know, and I know it's, you know, depending on the holiday or whatever, but it, it might make more sense to do it that way because now you've got an update from the director and everything. The hall members have their questions answered and then you can bring it to us then.
Yeah, that'd be good. There'd be a, a, a lot more communication than there hasn't been, so.
Okay.
There's still a lot of turnover.
A lot of turnover, look.
Yeah, so, is that mine?
Well, we'll take it, we'll do that.
Thank you.
One.
All right.
That's it, we're good.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, do you have anything additional?
Um, I have a, I have a, ha, 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 not yet, not till next one. I have a solid waste authority meeting Wednesday, so we can talk on that. And then, that's really, and that's really it. And Joe, I had a good, a question, you're, you're going to, uh, work on that. You signed up for that webinar or something?
Yes.
Okay. There's a webinar I afforded in, well, actually, don't, I admitted to, and still, infrastructure law, grant assistance program, so. Let's see, whatever, we're supposed to be able to get some more money somehow, I just want to see how that works out.
Good.
Yeah. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Price?
No, good meeting with Attorney General Morrison here last week. Uh, it was a lot of information in one hour and, uh, so, but, but there's a lot of wheels turning and things he's going. And, uh, so it was good to hear about the fact that they're going to assist us in figuring out a good way to spend the opioid and, and these funds that are coming to take on the battle with the drug addiction. And, uh, I was able to talk to the folks from his office afterward because it was a busy time. But anyway, and, and, and I suggested that we would like to have, to make sure when they're setting it up, to set up resources that we can call on because the last thing we know much about is setting up a, an addiction center or a counseling center or a mental health center. You know, we're not good, we just know that we need it because mental health issues are not very well served here in Preston County. And, and I think everybody who is sending somebody to get help doesn't have much luck in finding someone to do it. I don't think we have a hy, mental hygiene officer in the county. Anybody? No?
I can answer that. There wasn't really any answer, but.
No, you don't chime in because this all started when I was working with the regional jail folks and, and, and I started, we all started looking at it, but I went to the interims and I talked them about it and I said, this is just maybe mine, but I've got, working with EMS, we have people that go to the emergency room with a, a need for mental services and they might spend two days there.
Yeah.
In the ER, waiting to go someplace and no mental hygiene person here in the county, is there?
We don't have a mental hygiene commissioner anymore. Uh, Sheila Williams used to do it, she retired, and now the magistrate court, who are statutorily authorized to do mental hygiene proceedings, uh, have filled that gap. It's difficult to find someone and we don't have a lot of lawyers in Preston County, uh, most of whom are either in the prosecuting attorney's office or in the public defender's office. I'm the chief public defender. So I do live here in the county, so I get called out for all the mental hygiene proceedings. Uh, it's been different. The statute itself is primarily designed for people who are in a position that they're going to harm themselves or harm somebody else, and obviously drugs do that. But we're in this position where if we send someone down to Sharp Hospital to have a mental health assessment because they have drug addiction, they're going to be there a few days and then they're going to get kicked loose and they come back. It's not, it's not solving the problem in the same way that someone who's having a true mental health crisis and maybe suicidal, that the statute was designed to do. So there's a disconnect between the mental hygiene statute, the proceeding itself versus what the problem may be. But I, I do get the point, even if you do the mental hygiene and they're committed, it can still be, it, it takes some time for, for Valley and then Sharp Hospital to figure out where they're going to send them. A lot of people end up in Huntington, but they're there for a few days and then you kick back.
I think that somewhere between, and this was part of the interim discussion, uh, and, and the, the object of that was to try to hold back on the cost of regional jail because it's not that we don't want people who need to be in jail, in jail, but that the repeat offenders, the people that have drug addictions, or the people that have emotional problems. And that's people that just have an anger problem. And they end up in there and then they're back out and they don't get any help because it's hard to get. And then they end up back in there again. And so that costs us in more ways than one. So that's, that's what I talked to the AG about, uh, and I think that that is, now that there's some money coming, when somebody has something awful happen in their family, um, they can go to their family and talk to them about some issues or about how they're really sad and having trouble getting by. But who do they go to to get some, some professional help? I talked to one individual who had an awful experience, I mean, a terrible time with, you know, in their family. And, and they, so they decided they might need some help besides talking to mom and dad. And they called around to see if there was anything. And the best they could find was two hundred dollars an hour. Now, this is not somebody who can afford two hundred dollars an hour. So I don't think there's mental health facilities and health. If you, if you cut your finger, you can go to the local urgent care. But if you gotta, if you're feeling like you're really down and out or whatever, there's nothing. So I'm hoping that this will be worked into the addiction, I appreciate you chiming in on it because you know what kind of a problem it is.
Something like Chesapeake Ridge, but local here.
Local.
Transplantation issues are a lot.
Someplace they could get, that they could get to if they have a problem or that somebody could say, hey, call this number and it's not somebody in Oregon, you know? It's somebody that they can go see tomorrow morning or this evening or whatever. I don't know, I think that's a big problem with what's going on. You look around the country and a lot of things are happening that have to do with people that are struggling. And, and not bad people necessarily, just mental health things, so.
A lot of our addiction is driven by mental health and then it's an exacerbating problem.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And, and so, and, and that's exactly right. And that was one of the things from, from someone who's real familiar with that realm of, of issues that, that said, most of the people that are on that. Most of the people that are on that, one thing or another, either had an injury or they're just down and out. Gives them some relief and next thing you know, they got it. And then they end up in jail and things really go down from there. So I'm hoping that Community Corrections can be a really big part of maybe how we do that. Boy, that's enough on that, but it's true, it's just sad. But thank you, Sam.
Okay, anything else?
I know there's an EMS advisory meeting coming up, but I'm not sure what the date is.
Pretty good.
Is there?
Early voting started October 26th and will continue through November 5th. Those hours, just a reminder to the public that that does take place down the forum hall, the election center, not at the Michael Mann Center as it had, had been in previous years. Saturdays, the polls are open for early voting down there from 9:00 to 5:00 PM and then of course, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:30 for early voting. Election day is November 8th. And that, the polls open at 6:30, I believe, and run through 7:30. So just a, just a reminder on that. Oh, there was some question that you had about the remainder of the calendar for the rest of the year and our meetings. We set that in January and we had moved our meetings from Mondays to Tuesdays so that we could avoid having to reschedule those Monday meetings because of the holidays. So I think that it's already been handled, so we'll just move forward with the remainder of the calendar being what it is. Any other concerns? Everybody good? Okay, all right, then this meeting is adjourned.
Steve George. Any hopes for a luncheon meeting?
Funny story for you, years ago, my son started wrestling and he doesn't do that anymore, but he had entertained it and was.